It is an informational meeting tonight, so you have a forum, as you probably know, but regardless.
D ninety-seven or D two hundred has forms.
Does, yes.
It's D two hundred can function to hear three boards that are meeting at the same time. I'm not one board and it has been same thing. So they can follow their own.
Yeah, so we spoke a little bit about, so what we're going to do is we are going to go ahead and call roll. There will be, there are no action items that we will move on tonight on the agenda in any way, shape or form. The only thing we had anyway was minutes and we could do that at a later meeting. And so we're still free for informational conversation about various items.
And just for the record for D ninety-seven, we did have a, you know, forum and members scheduled to attend. But when it was known that it was an informational meeting, that's why we made a change to who's here tonight.
That is, sorry, cancel. Well, then I sincerely apologize on behalf of the village.
I sincerely apologize on behalf of the village. This has happened before. And it has been the two, the two boards that have a forum just moved forward. And those who are part of the board that has not, does not need forums, just say silent. And because you, you have a forum present, you would have just, you have to start your meeting. You can't talk about business and the IGA of your governmental body is business. So you, you need to start your meeting.
In two hundred. And if D ninety-seven chooses not to, then they also can't actually participate. So I was going to tell my two trustees that I would remain silent for the rest of the evening and that they could ask questions if leaving. But you can't.
It just turns green and leave it.
Oh, it's still, so I mean, is that, do we under, you understand what I'm saying? If you have more than three people of any board, you have to start your meeting.
Right, because then you're breaking OMA if you don't start your meeting, which makes perfect sense, which is.
I will say, because we don't have a forum, we just can't vote on anything, but we can still comment on the meeting. That was, that's, that's my understanding of that. That's, that's what we've done in the past with regular meetings that aren't voting meetings.
Okay, I would say if that's fine with your attorney, then that's fine. So the village board, we can't tell three of us having a dialogue that relates to village business. So that will be the case for the village board.
Sorry.
Sorry for the further interruption, but they give.
No, no, and agreed. If we had three numbers, then we cannot have it without moving forward. That is absolutely true. But if we don't have, then we're, we're okay.
Questions. So my common rule for all three entities. The village, the village board meeting is efficient. Jesus. My apologies. The village board meeting is going to end. So please do not call the village board.
Okay. I called the word of collaboration for the Calvin meeting on seven four point four. And six forty P M. For I am the South cafeteria and OPR high school. Please, please call the votes.
Dr. Livingston.
Present.
Dr. Oner Ranch, Dr. Joseph.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Arquion.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Ms. Williams Lee.
Here.
Mr. Kowski.
Here.
Mr. Brandwood.
Here.
For D ninety-seven, I have Dr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Ross Driven.
Here.
Do you have any public comments?
No public comments whatsoever.
Now move to approval of minutes. Since we do not have enough members from all agencies, it comes to your forum, we will table the approval of minutes until the next statement. When we move into financial reports.
I think just before we do the financial report, we, I guess, acknowledge that we're a community that's greeting lots of Detective Reddins. Thank you. And, and to name that, and to thank you for being here, Vicki and Robbie, knowing, and Lucia, knowing what the village is navigating and managing. And to express our condolences with the whole community. That really is devastating loss. And it feels strange to move to business as usual and report on financials. And we will do that, recognizing that, that we're holding Detective Reddins in his locusts in our.
Thank you. I'm Laura Crawford. I'm the Associate Director with Collaboration for Early Childhood. And I'll just give you a very brief overview of our financials, which is something that we do regularly to the tri-board. We also present our last approved, board-approved financials to the IGA board, which we did in October. And so far, our fiscal year runs from July to June. So we're, we, our board's approved our first quarter financials, and that's what you have in your packet. Our overall, just a brief overview of our finances for the last fiscal year. Our, we had a clean audit. There were no findings. The copies of the audit have been shared with all of your lead financial officers. And they are also available on our website along with our nine ninety forms. And we, all of those are up there since the inception of the organization. Highlights this past year are that we, once again, we invoice the IGA for all six of the available installments. We typically, we bill the D ninety-seven as the fiscal agent every month for two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. For a total of one point three one five six two zero dollars per year. This past year, that accounted for eighty-one percent of our organizational revenue. And the auditors determined that we do not need to return any funds to the IGA this past year. And also the current year that we're already in, we, our spending is on track to do the same. So we expect to bill all six payments again and to not return anything back to the IGA. We have about seven months of cash on hand. Our policies say we should have about three months of cash on hand, so we are in good shape there. The timing of our revenue and expenses is a little bit different. We do bill the IGA every other month. But our expenses kind of, they flush away throughout the year, so we tend to have more expenses later in the year. So right now we have the seven months cash on hand. And our finance committee has reviewed the audit very closely. And let's see, as far as our financial statements go in the packet, you've got our statement of financial position. And also our budget to actual for the first quarter. And there are some notes on the bottom of it. I'm not going to read them. And just know that we are in good shape financially. I guess one thing that's important to mention is the private grants that we have that supplement the IGA funding. We are fortunate to recently be a recipient of a grant from Birth to Five Illinois. That's for one hundred thousand dollars to do outreach work that you'll hear about in a little bit. In areas outside of Oak Park in addition to Oak Park. So that is one thing that we're always on the lookout for is funding opportunities that fund activities outside of Oak Park. As needs arise. We also were fortunate to be recipients of Lemonade, the nine eleven tribute fundraising event in River Forest. And that brought in, you know, about, yeah, about thirty-two thousand dollars in September. So we did that in conjunction with Wonder Works. They brought in about the same amount. So that was really fun. And that's unrestricted funding, which we're always on the lookout for. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about our finances.
Can I ask one quick question just to, because I wasn't technically fast enough. Birth to Five was how much?
One hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand. And also, are we getting a copy of this?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, right?
Okay.
Westons. Wanted to, uh, discussion items, starting with the basics.
The IGA.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Good afternoon. There wasn't any new activities since the last meeting, so I'll be giving a recap of what we had previously. The straight-up reserve account. The balance is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. And the interest paid pretty much from January up until September is two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. There, there have been two payments that has been processed so far, two payments. The total was out four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. District ninety-seven paid the, the amounts that District ninety-seven pays per payment is eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. District two hundred pays seven four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the village of Oak Park pays fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And the bank balances as of October ninth, District ninety-seven, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. District two hundred, one hundred and twenty-six thousand and forty-two dollars and seventeen cents. And the village of Oak Park has one hundred and sixteen thousand, one, uh, one thirty-six and nineteen cents. So there will be another, another invoice that will go out May twentieth to the three entities. That's, that's all.
All right, moving on to discussion items, I asked a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Just earlier, it's about the ARBA funding from the village, and I thought there was a problem with that.
So the ARBA funding is not, it's reflected in our overall budget. It's not something we review at this meeting just because it's with a separate contract.
Um, moving on to discussion, I'll start with the basics presentation of ideas.
So I'm super excited to introduce Courtney Hill, who's here all the way from DeKalb, which she claims is not far to come. But it's a lot farther than our office on Oak Park Avenue, so we thank her for making the trip. Our IGA reps heard a little bit about this at our last meeting, and we wanted to have the opportunity to share with the tri-board a little bit more about what the basics is, why we're moving forward with this in our community. And to hear from Courtney, who is with the DeKalb County Regional Office of Education, which is the Basics Illinois backbone. So they support these communities across the state doing this messaging across, across their communities. And then Courtney coordinates the work in DeKalb County. And so to hear from a community who's been doing this work for a while to tell us some about what we might be able to learn and expect. Yeah, so I'm going to pass the mic literally over to Courtney.
Thank you. I do have my phone here just to keep me on track for time, because I could talk about the basics for a really long time. And I don't have that tonight, so I'm just going to keep an eye on the clock here. Thank you so much for having me. It truly is not that far. And when you live out in the boonies, you're used to driving far, so it was, it was a lovely drive. I'm Courtney Hill. I work at the DeKalb County Regional Office of Education. We are the backbone of a lot of things, our early learning collaborative, the basics initiative locally in our, in our county. And then also we're the backbone agency for the statewide initiative, the basics Illinois. And then my colleague Diana Braviesca is in the crowd over here, and she is the Basics Illinois Coordinator. She is the one who's like boots on the ground, working with a lot of these communities. And she is here today as well. You may be wondering like, how did the backbone agency, a statewide backbone agency, what were they doing out in DeKalb County? So I'm going to give a little context for that of how that came to be. Our, the ROE, if you hear me say ROE, that's the Regional Office of Education. As I said, is the backbone organization for the DeKalb County Collaborative for Young Children. We have a mission and vision and goal, really to increase the number of DeKalb County children that are ready for kindergarten. The collaborative started in twenty sixteen. We heard Dr. Ferguson, who is the founder of the basics at Harvard University. We heard him speak at a Illinois State Department of Education conference in twenty seventeen. We formally adopted the basics as an early learning initiative in twenty, it was twenty eighteen. And then I came on board later that year, late, early twenty nineteen. So I've been, been in my position, which has changed vastly in the past six years. Just to give you guys a little context, if you're not familiar with our county, that's totally fine. I find that happens. Further west you go, I don't know a lot about Ogle and Lane. They're right next to me. But just again, to give you context of how this happened and how it's gone statewide. We are a population of a hundred thousand, around a hundred thousand people, mostly rural and agricultural. You'll see a lot of cornfields. However, our largest municipality is the city of DeKalb, does have forty-two thousand people. It looks a lot different than the rest of our county. It houses Northern Illinois University. It's our largest school district. It's really diverse geographically, ethnically, racially, linguistically, very diverse. We have a lot of struggles in our, in our county. Some may resonate with you guys and some may not. We do have some deep pockets of poverty in our county. Our largest school district does sixty-five percent of kiddos qualify for free reduced lunch. A lot, actually almost all of our resources are centralized in the northern part of the county. There's little to no public, there's actually no public transportation outside of the city of DeKalb. So if you do not have a car or a ride, it is really hard to access services and, and resources and supports. We are just riddled with childcare deserts. There is no childcare to be found anywhere nearby. We have pretty low kindergarten readiness scores across our eight, we sit over eight public school districts. And then just anecdotally, being a regional office of education, we work pretty closely with all of our educators in our, in our school districts. And post-COVID, we have just kindergarten and pre-K teachers have just been, you know, anecdotally sharing with us the, the rise and increase in behavioral issues that they've been seeing in the classroom, even outside of the classroom that's affecting their learning in the classroom. We also are, across the county, our highest truancy rates are in kindergarten through fifth grade, which is alarming. If, you know, a kindergartner's not skipping school or staying home to watch, I don't know, I watched Price is Right. So if we're seeing the high truancy rates at that low, you know, there's, there's probably something going on in the home that we would like to, you know, work with these families experiencing these things. I really, I just wanted to talk about before we get into what the basics are, like, why did we choose the basics? I actually wasn't even part of their, part of the team that, that did it, and it really was in response to what our community wanted, what our teachers wanted. And, and they wanted something that could provide equitable access to early learning experiences based on those issues that you had, saw that I had highlighted in that previous slide. You know, following the science that we need to be educating the whole child. Typically, when we think about, when folks think about kindergarten readiness, they're thinking about academic skills. But we know that you cannot piece apart a child or an adult. We need all of these skills to be prepared for school and life success. So talking about academic skills, yes, they're important, but also social, emotional skills, physical skills. We really loved that the basics honored parents and caregivers as a, as a child's first teacher. Five or six years before that child ever walks into a kindergarten classroom, they may never have even been in a preschool classroom. We're, we have lots of preschool deserts as well. And it really takes that whole community approach. It's not, this is not just an issue for just parents or just the schools, like, the whole community can work together on this. And anyone can learn and do the basics. So it can be a Winkin family case management worker. It could be a grocery store clerk. It could be a post office. A, or a postman. It could be a pediatrician, like, really anyone can positively impact a child's development. And then based on, you know, the science saying that ninety percent of brain growth happens in the first five years of a child's life. It is an exceptionally small but critical window that we really would like to focus and support our families that have children at this age. And the basics starts early. It starts, I mean, really, it starts before day one, but you can do the basics with your, your one deal. And it's free. It doesn't cost money to do the basics. It doesn't cost money to share the basics. It doesn't cost money to, you know, you don't need a PhD in child development to be able to know how to do the basics. You don't need to buy a five hundred dollar iPad and a monthly subscription to a service to, to do the basics with your child. It's completely free. It's all about using the time that you're with your children, ordinary moments, everyday moments, building it into those routines. I realize I'm talking to a whole bunch of educators here, so, but it is, I always like to, you know, share some of these, the research on why this is important. The basics is an evidence-based program. It is, it was on Harvard or is on Harvard University. But we, we always like to look at, sometimes, you know, you have to lay the ground of like, why, why is it so important during these early years? This was a study out of the Brookings Institute, showing that the probability of mastering basic skills by fifth grade is cut in half if a child is not kindergarten ready. So again, just really focusing on those, those early years. This is a graphic that we sometimes show from the National Assessment of Educational Progress, showing that these opportunity gaps that we see start early. As evident, they're evident by age two, even before then. It usually starts like a six-month difference. That, the opportunity gap will double by kindergarten, and then by graduation, you're looking at three to four years of, of gaps. So the science is saying we, we need to start early. These are two studies that I like to show, recent ones. The Milton Institute had found that the most important catalyst of healthy brain development in an infant is consistent nurturing interaction with a parent or a caregiver. And then at University of Chicago, they had done a study where they found that when parents believed that their investments mattered, they began to invest more heavily into their child's development, which in turn has measurable outfit, effects on child outcomes. So when parents know what they're doing matters, they're more likely to do it. A lot of parents are already doing some of the basics, all of the basics. But maybe they don't know that what they're doing is building, you know, a strong foundation for learning in their, in their child's brain. They're, they're setting them up for success. So if we can, if we can message that, then they're more likely to do it. So the basics is an initiative for whole communities to support vibrant learning and brain development in young children. That is Dr. Ferguson on the right there. He is out of Harvard University. He still teaches. I don't know how that man has any energy and time, but it's really interesting. He's actually not even an early childhood expert by training. He was actually an MIT-trained economist. And he was looking at, you know, how, what does a thriving community look like? And he kept following the science, and it was like, oh, college preparedness, you know, workforce preparedness. And then the science was like, oh, that's linked to high school graduation, which is linked to fifth grade reading level, which is linked to kindergarten readiness, which is, as we saw, we have pretty stark opportunity gaps by age two. So I just love that an MIT-trained economist, like, he followed the science and the same, like, we have to start early. The way that the basics works, I call them like our mothership in Boston. That's where all the science, the research, the tools, support. It comes out of Boston. And then there's affiliate communities around the country. This is an outdated map. There's many more across the country. DeKalb was the first in the state of Illinois. And we're glad that there's friends now across the state of Illinois, because we were feeling lonely. But I just want to give you guys context. I guess that it's a very large movement across the country. And actually, in Bahamas, Bermuda, Mexico, Brazil, and Australia as well, and Haiti. And the basics uses a strategy, a public health approach called socio-ecological saturation. What you're looking at here, it used to be like a full circle, so I still refer to it as a wheel. It doesn't look like a wheel so much anymore. But essentially, what we're trying, who we're trying to impact are folks and families in the middle there, right? Like, we really want to support our families with young children. We all live in social ecologies, where what's happening in this outside of all of these places, in all these sectors, our norms, our values, our beliefs is going to influence our, our families here in the center. So we believe that in order to provide equitable access, we want the basics to be everywhere. We want everyone to be exposed to the latest science that says this is what kids need. You know, to, to be a happy, healthy, productive citizen in, in our society. So every single one of these sectors you see here is a place where the basics can be. Most recently, in our own community, we finally checked next to every single sector. Our last one was barbers and stylists. And I'll show some examples of what that actually looks like. But really, it's just, again, taking that whole community approach. This is a complex issue and a complex, I don't want to say problem. I'll say complex issue, and it takes more than just parents or just teachers or just schools. It's the whole community. Like, how can the whole community support these, these kiddos that we want to be, you know, successful in school and life? So these are the five basics. I don't, I'm not going to go over it a ton. I'm, again, in a room full of educators. These are, the themes are going to look familiar to you, but what the basics does is provide a common language that everybody can understand, everybody can use. So for the first basic, it's maximize love, manage stress. What we're talking about is social, emotional development. If you were not in the education world, when you hear social, emotional development or executive functioning skills, like, that may go over your head. Like, what are you talking about? How can my two-month-old have executive functioning skills, right? But we can say maximize love, manage stress, and that can make sense, and, and everybody can use that. A pediatrician can use that language. In with, they can use that language at the bus stop. We can use that language. Like, anybody can use this language, really just providing a common message. And the strategy is that when this message is being delivered across the community over and over and over again, that's when that's going to affect and impact our families with young children. So the second one is toxining point. Those, if that's early, you know, communication skills, also early literacy as well. Count group and compare, early math skills, explore through movement and play, and then read and discuss stories. So we didn't pull, we didn't create the basics, right? This is what science does, gives me to experience, to get that strong foundation for life success. It is really nice, though, that the basics are aligned to the Illinois Early Learning Guidelines. They're just worded a little differently, but I also think it's a really great example that if you were a brand-new parent who had maybe no background in early learning or education, like, what does self-regulation approaches to learning and social and emotional development mean, right? That's like some jargony words and concepts, but I can understand maximize love and manage stress. And then, so you can see, we've crosswalked, and we have crosswalked even further than the domains that, this is a short, maybe short amount of time tonight. So I just wanted to show you that. Additionally, the basics do align to the five domains of kindergarten readiness. Kids is the kindergarten individual developmental survey, which all public school kindergarten teachers have to use to, not assess, but it's a tool to use to, to see how ready our kids are for kindergarten. And again, approaches to learning, self-regulation, what does that actually mean? It makes sense if you're, and it should make sense to a kindergarten teacher, but what, what about for a grandma who is the primary caregiver for her child? Like, how can I do approaches to learning with my one-year-old? So just really wanting to show like the alignment of like, when we are saying we're doing the basics, we're promoting the basics. We truly are promoting kindergarten readiness. We truly are promoting school readiness for our kiddos. As I had said before, you know, the basics is really a really nice messaging tool, not only for parents, but again, to like, get that rallying pride for the community to get involved. So we, this is an example of how we do that. We are, our collaborative, we call this our community report card, so we look at kids' data. It's, you know, produced every year, made public every year. It's a new cohort, and we make like a report card, like, how well has the community done to support our kiddos as they enter kindergarten? We always say kids' data is not a reflection on our schools, not a reflection on our teachers. The community has had those kids for five years before they ever walked foot into a classroom. So we, and that can be kind of hard to understand for folks who maybe aren't in the education world. But if we can, you know, really show that this is what kindergarten readiness is, this is where we're at, and those developmental areas that those kids are, the teachers are, are using the kids' tool on, they align to the basics. So if we want to, so in this, I think this is twenty twenty, the sixty-five percent of our kiddos were not kindergarten-ready. So if we want to improve that, the answer is right, that we can do the basics. And here's some examples of what socio-ecological saturation looks like. Just again, really quick, but I want to tell you guys, like, I'm pretty familiar with the work that the collaborative here does, big fan. Long before I was actually ever in my position, so I, I'm fully aware that you guys do socio-ecological saturation. This isn't like a new concept. I just like to show examples of what does it look like, what basics is, when you use the basics in socio-ecological saturation. So the first example, and this is actually not just in DeKalb, there, there's some Rockford folks and actually North Carolina and, and across the country. So that first picture is a bus stop. That actually is in DeKalb, and it says you are your child's first and most important teacher. There's some things you can do with your kiddo at the bus stop as you're waiting right there. There's, um, some things you can do with your kiddo at the bus stop as you're waiting right there, um, uh, to positively impact their, their brain. Um, the, the second picture is at a restaurant, so we have lots of restaurants that have, um, you know, you're, you're waiting with your kiddo anyways for food to come, and are there some things you can do, um, right then and there? Uh, that middle picture at the top is actually a barber shop in Rockford. They, uh, this barber shop was so amazing, we went there and talked with the owner and the, um, a couple of the barbers, and they, uh, like, remodeled this whole area, it's a, they call them ready-to-learn spaces, and they actually host reading nights, um, every month, and they do read and discuss stories, and they're reaching families that way. Uh, this is a children's museum, that picture on the bottom in, um, Greensboro, North Carolina. And then that, uh, picture to the right is just a, it's at a daycare center, a childcare center. And, um, again, we're just like saturating the basics everywhere, so as parents are dropping their kiddos off, they're seeing those, um, those basics up top. Um, that top picture is that our health department, they're what I would call our North Star in DeKalb County. They've been our partner since the beginning, they completely remodeled the waiting room. Again, there's tips that you can do while you're waiting there for your appointment, um, some books and a busy board. Uh, we have a pediatrician's office showing some posters on the left, um, a police department, um, in the bottom there. I, as I said, we are in DeKalb County, we're a very agricultural and gardening, growing your own food kind of community. So we have community gardens that are aligned to the basics. And then, um, up top is, um, a project we did with the pediatrician, um, some welcome baby bags, which I know you guys do, um, really awesome ones there as well. What I can show you here is like staff trainings, right? Like, we trained the staff that work at these places to know the basics, how to, how to share that. These are just like some of the fun, the fun things people like to look at. Um, so that's why it's in DeKalb, because we were the, we were the first in the state to adopt it. And what, what had happened is we were all by our lonesome for a couple of years, and then Rockford and Aurora received a grant to do it, and then looked to us as, um, the community that had been doing it for a couple of years. So we had, um, really, uh, informally started supporting them as they began implementation, and more and more communities, um, started hearing about it and asking us to do it. And, uh, our funder, um, is actually based out of Chicago and really cares about this and, and loves the basics, and had asked us to be the backbone, um, for the state of Illinois. So we, um, I would say we soft-launched Basics Illinois in 2021 when we were doing it informally. In 2023, um, we were able to, uh, get funding that we could hire a full-time coordinator, which is my colleague Diana. And, uh, right now, there are licensed communities and, um, unlicensed and exploring communities. You'll see the basics in Rockford, um, DuPage County, Greater Elgin, um, it's actually mostly through U46, so it spills out of Elgin. And then, um, our, our, my local community in Basics DeKalb, or, uh, I'm sorry, DeKalb County. And then we have some exploring communities that are just in the process of onboarding, such as Peoria, Springfield, Kendi, Kendall and Grandin County is just waiting for some funding to come through. Um, Over Park, we put you on our, on our map. Um, so we love to see that those pins are getting greater, um, across the state, because like I said, we were pretty lonely by ourselves. Um, so we do operate as a, um, system of support, like a PLC, if you think of it, um, for the education folks here. Um, we, we want to accelerate and improve the effectiveness of all of us. Um, it is, the basics does provide a learning network across the entire country, which is fantastic. But, um, my friends in Boston, you know, don't have to navigate the Illinois State Board of Education and Illinois Department of Public Health, like, it's really nice to have communities that are navigating the same systems. Um, like, one example is, um, that in those four licensed communities, Northwestern Medicine has a major hospital in three of them. So we were able to come together and get and saturate into those hospitals, uh, that way across, you know, through systems that we have to men, uh, we have to, um, uh, you know, navigate. Uh, we do provide mentoring, um, uh, consulting, um, as I said, we're a localized network. We do connect to the basics learning network. We always say we are not gatekeepers, anyone can go to Dr. Ferguson, the basics, and inform directly to them and never work with us. Um, we do not own the basics, it's o- open source information. Um, but we hope that, you know, folks that are coming on board will work with us, um, so we can all, you know, work together and, and really, um, we, we, in DeKalb County, we really saw it as like a moral imperative, like, not just DeKalb County children should be, um, given access to this. Like, we want all kiddos in Illinois to, you know, be exposed to this and, and be able to experience the basics and, and really just get a great start in life. Um, and I think that's it, because I'm, yes, I am running out of time. I don't have my email on here, but, um, um, I'm sure you, you can ask that. Yeah. And that is it for me, unless there's questions.
We'd love to hear either questions exchanged, questions or comments you all have about that. And especially, I think we're curious, thinking from the perspective of each of your respective boards or, or locations, sort of what comes to mind when you hear that and think about our working part, and more questions for Courtney and Marvy.
I don't have any questions, but first of all, great information, and I really love the simplicity of it, um, and the way that you're able to saturate it in so many parts of just the ecosystem of the community. And so I think it has a lot of promise, it was really good information, I was familiar with it, and I really like it.
So, May, thank you for that terrific presentation. Uh, can you talk a little bit about sort of learnings and implementation, uh, by the, so, so just like important true keys to successful?
Um, that is a great question, and it's, uh, it is interesting, um, of the four licensed communities that are probably the far furthest, in, in the state of Illinois, I should say, the furthest in implementation, we all started in very different places. Um, I, I'll be completely honest, when DeKalb County started, we had a one-year grant, so we did not have a lot of, um, plan, I mean, we don't always plan. Like, I would have loved a six-month strategic plan, but I had a year to show some, I had some grant deliverables, right? Our friends in, um, Elgin, they have been mulling this over and planning for close to two years. Um, so they, they had some time to do that. Um, I think because this is so new, um, we haven't been able to really look at that yet. I mean, funding is always going to be probably the first thing, you need sustainable funding, right? Because when I say like I do staff trainings and, um, a pandemic happens and there's an entire staff turnover, and that whole entire organization probably needs some refreshing, like, there needs to be a person behind the scenes who's, who's doing this. So I would say like funding, um, so solid, sustainable funding, and then dedicated staff. And Dr. Ferguson and the basics will say this too, like, yes, you can do this piecemeal, like, so-and-so is volunteering here, and this person's volunteering here, but your effectiveness is not going to be, um, great if there isn't dedicated staff to do it. Um, so I would say that, and all those four, of the four that are furthest in implementation do have dedicated staff. To, like, my entire job is the basics, little in DeKalb, little in the state, I do other things too on our collaborative. But like, my primary goal is to share the basics with everybody. So, um, I don't have like some solid data and, and research that's been done, but just speaking anti-jolly, sustainability, uh, funding sustainability, dedicated staff, probably some planning as well.
So, sorry, I was just going to comment, as an individual board member, not, uh, on behalf of the board, but how nicely this segues into the portrait of an eighth-grade graduate and our concept that education is not just in one place, one spot. And so I was really excited when I was reading through your materials, and even more excited as I'm here to speak tonight. So, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, it was a great presentation. Very, very much enjoyed, enjoyed it. The question is more for the collaboration, in, in terms of where you're at with it, where it's going? Is there a best of being named, being named, what's going on?
Yeah, wonderful question, thank you. So, um, we are early stages, but I think what Courtney's saying in terms of startup needs, we're, we're really far down the road, because we've been here operating in a park for more than 20 years and under this IGA for more than 10 years. So we, uh, sort of how we're seeing the basics is an organizing framework for a lot of what we're already doing. I think you'll see, and, and I think you all know, we do a ton of community outreach, a ton of professional development training. So we're already out doing a lot of the work that it would take to spread the basics. And what the basics gives us is a science-backed, standards-aligned, coordinated way of sharing that messaging across the community. So what we think is that it will sort of help us organize around a lot of the work that we're already doing, if that makes sense. So, um, we're at the stage of sharing the exciting updates with everyone, and then putting together implementation plans of what it would look like both to do some of that upfront work of the more intensive training and outreach and relationship building. The good news again being that we have so many strong relationships already in place across the community. Um, and then really thinking through sustainability. And you'll see a large number of collaboration staff here tonight who are all really excited about the opportunity to think about how to weave this into their roles. So how do I weave this into the health and development work that I'm doing? How do I weave this into the community engagement work that I'm doing? Um, so we're, we're ready.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, it's a great question.
So what are you thinking about, uh, that bring impact and success? So sometimes it's easier to move that employee on.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, thank you. Um, when, um, when I was asked to come here, I'm like, I know they're going to ask an impact question, like, tell me the numbers, right? Um, there, so I think the entire state, the entire country is looking for that perfect formula of this, plus this, plus this, equals a child who's kindergarten-ready, equals, you know, you see that trajectory, right? And I don't think we have it yet. Um, some of the impact, there's a lot of different ways we collect data and measure impact at a local level, like internally, um, but also at, uh, at Harvard through the Basics Inc., it's like the mothership. Um, we actually do use the ki- kids' data as, it's not going to be causation, it's a correlation, right? Because I can't get into that child's brain that, when they do the kids' data and share it, that, oh, that kid got basics, right? But we do look at it as correlational, looking at that cohort every year. Our goal is to increase kindergarten readiness here in the state of Illinois. Um, you know, actually, before I say that, something that we like live by is like, you can't improve something if you're not measuring it. Um, I, I know teachers might feel different, but I feel lucky that we have kids' data, because, um, working with other states and they're like, you guys get, you have kindergarten readiness data, we would love that. Um, so we do use that data as a way to see, um, are we moving the needle, um, uh, across kindergarten readiness, right? Otherwise, there's lots of surveys that are given out, um, there's lots of tools too. So even when I talk about the health department and being an implementation partner, there's a tool, there's a measure to see like how embedded the basics is into that organization, a level one all the way to a level five. So we do yearly, um, seeing like, okay, this organization's saying they're, they're doing the basics, are they? Um, and then we do a lot of parent surveys, um, uh, or perception surveys, like, I feel like my child, um, is better at this, or I feel like I'm better able to connect with my child, or I see this skill that my child, you know, was struggling with before, there's a lot of that work. Um, there is though, no, like magic formula of this, plus this, plus this. Uh, it's just going off of what the science says kids need. I hope we will get there soon, one day. We are, and I will say Dr. Ferguson is interested in looking at that too, and is, there's lots of research projects and stuff going on with that, and data collection across the country as well.
So my question is, is, is going to be personal. Uh, I spent this morning with my four-month-old and two-and-a-half-year-old, um, and I'm grading myself against the basics as I'm doing it. Um, there's also video materials that are going on that, that kids learn from. And I'm just wondering how they fit into the puzzle, especially when you talk about mobility and, you know, known transportation, et cetera. Because, I, I'm grading myself, but I'm also grading the videos and saying, wow, they're counting, they're, you know, there's not interaction. So just, the question is, are there, how do video materials fit into this work? And there were good ones and bad ones.
Sure, um, technology is like a, a hot topic, right? And like, and there's like some strong feelings either way, and I'm not a PhD in child, I don't have PhD in child development, so I'm not going to say whether it's good, it's bad, it's, to me, it's morally neutral. Um, and like, technology has a time and place for everything, and it's just a part of our lives. The, I don't think the basics takes a stance on like watching, like having your kiddo watch a video to learn a skill. I, I don't, as far as I know, um, I think there's a time and a place for everything. I mean, the AAP has a recommendation, I think it's actually under two, no screens. I'm a parent myself, I have five kids, one's two, let me tell you, he watches TV, okay? So like, I'm not going to sit here and rage, like, don't put a screen in front of your TV. Um, so I don't, I don't have like a definitive answer on that. I will say there's basics videos, now they're, they're geared towards caregivers, like, this is what it looks like. And they're really great videos, um, again, everything's actually open source information. You can go on the Basics Inc., and I would highly recommend you do a look at that. There's great videos for caregivers on like, what does maximize love, manage stress look like, and their real families, um, I don't know, Jen, I'm sorry. If you would like to.
Oh, no, I mean, I think it's, I, realistically, what we know about early childhood development is that it is most effective in the context of a relationship. And so for little ones, what they're learning, if they are watching the video, especially if they're watching with someone, they're getting love and snuggles while they're doing it, and getting that early numeracy and stuff. I think are, same as Courtney, we don't take a firm stance on there's no place for technology. I think what we know is that it is through relationships that children get the best learning. So, yeah.
I, I have a question, uh, for Courtney, but before that, I want to tell you, Tom, that even if your grandkids watched a little TV, you're a great grandpa. No, I mean, a, a wonderful grandma. I meant a wonderful grandma. So, uh, Courtney, I also appreciate your presentation. My question is about the use of kids' data. So to, for the non-educators in the room, kids is an observational tool. Um, so there's this tension, right? Because it's a really good tool, because teachers are trained to really observe children in their context, and there's levels of performance with descriptors. And they're saying, wow, based on the evidence of the child really in the world, not like filling out bubble sheets, but really interacting with the world, how is this child doing across the different domains that you have on the screen? Really important and meaningful, research-based, observational tool. So there's that on the one hand, and the tension then, once we make it part of the protocol, we kind of up the ante on this adult-level stuff, even though we don't intend to. Because now it feels a little high stakes, and there become questions around, which are the right questions for people outside the field to ask? What's the evidence of impact? What's the return on investment? But there becomes this inherent tension between tools and the work of educators and child, and, and raising children in a, in a meaningful developmental way, and this adult stuff around, show me the numbers. And so I just wonder what your thoughts are on that tension, and then you have insights you have.
Um, you did hear me say like, okay, kindergarten teachers don't necessarily love kids. Um, but, because it, like you said, it is, um, it can be high stakes, it's stressful, even just to do it in the first 40 days of, you know, kiddos who have never, maybe even sat at a desk. Um, additionally, it can also, you know, um, the, the concept of like, okay, we need to make sure that this kid is, this is a kindergartner that has to be geared for first grade, we have a kindergartner here, and this is kindergarten, this is not first grade, right? Like, we're focusing on a kindergartner. So it is a delicate balance of, like you said, like, this is what kids, you know, I, I can't control what the Illinois State Board of Education says that we have to do, and these are the standards. And I understand that sometimes kindergarten teachers feel like it's just one more thing for them to do, and, um, but at the same time, it is, right, it is evidence-based, like, we know that these skills, kids can do them. Like, a, a personal story, also, um, being a parent in the early childhood world, like, I don't like math. I had a really bad experience with it, and it wasn't until I really got like deep into basics, and I was like, oh my gosh, I think I might be giving, um, my math anxiety is spilling onto my kids, and, um, I changed my parenting habits when I learned that, like, there was a study that showed that like eight-month-olds can recognize patterns. And so I was like, really, I was more intentional with my son, um, he's my little case study, because he was the kid I had when I started. Um, and I, and I did, and I did more math things with my then-18-month-old. And like, because there really is like kids, children, not kids, the, the tool. Children really do have the ability, um, to be a math person, like, that's what Dr. Ferguson says, like, we always say, oh, I'm not a math person. Literally, every one of our brains is wired to do math. Um, so, um, I, there is a delicate balance of that, and we really also try and communicate to our kindergarten teachers that, um, when you're doing, you know, you're using the kids' tool and making this public, and, you know, sometimes if the, the scores aren't great, or, you know, they're alarming, um, a- again, it's not reflective of our kindergarten teachers. We really try and put the, always the responsibility on the community, and, and not in a negative way, as a call to action. This is where we're at, like, what can we do as a community to, to better support our families, so that they can get a great start? Um, we definitely don't use it as like a report card of like, these parents and these kids. It's really like, what are we doing as an organization, as a collaborative, as a, as a community together? I don't know if that answers, I'm sorry.
It does, I mean, it's not, it's a, it's a big question, right? And so, uh, no, I, I think that's just important to name that in the space. Um, and I think we just have to be clear about how we frame the why, because there can be perverse incentives then, to be like, oh, let me kick that up a little, even though I'm, or, or even not the teacher, but the administrators, like, we need to bring up those kids' scores. Well, now we've completely lost the purpose, which is for us to communicate with meaning around where a child is and how to get them to the next level. And so I just want to just flag the perverse incentives that can happen when, uh, we start to apply kind of And so I just want to just flag the perverse incentives that can happen when we start to apply kind of business thinking to the work of raising children, which happens too often.
Absolutely, and I should have also mentioned, like, anytime we talk about kids and, um, you know, a child being able to adequately show the, the skills that they have is done best through play, in a play-based classroom, in a play-based setting, right? Like, children show their skills that they have when they're playing, which is a huge, you know, advocating for play-based kindergarten and early learning, which is technically up to age eight. So we, we also use it in that sense too, of like, um, you know, working with our districts and our teachers of like, okay, how, how much play are you guys doing? Like, a kiddo is not going to show you their best, be their best when they're sitting in a desk all day doing worksheets, right? Like, how, how can we incorporate play in that to really acknowledge, like, these are, these are still kids, and, and play is how they learn, and ensure they're their best?
Thank you so much. Um, I just had a quick question about, um, where the newly created Office of Early Childhood Education in the state of Illinois, what's their perspective if they were buying, like,
I do not have an answer for that. Um, it, I don't, I just know in a different sense, like, there, we do not have an answer for that. We work with people, um, in the state level that will be in that office. Um, our funder funds a lot of this, uh, I don't, I mean, my hope and wish would be that there will be a place for the basics at the, at the, um, Department of Early Childhood. It's too early to, um, give you a clearance on that, I apologize. I hope one day I'm going to come back here and say, I know what I can tell you now.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the Equity Access Subcommittee update.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we just wanted to give a quick update on the Subcommittee that addresses that, the access. And, um, we'll start with a quick, just because there's some slides, some reviews meeting, we just wanted to check around this and where we were. So obviously, thank you to the amazing committee, these are the members here. The awesome team, and just as a reminder, um, in terms of what we're thinking about as areas of incredible authority during this year, we want to be clear, um, about those three areas that we're really trying to probe. So asking the question, who's actually accessing early childhood services now? And how are we ensuring that families are doing the most, are receiving it first? And we also want to look back at this ten-year agreement that we've had, and what does our long, two-year deal suggest about the impact of our current early childhood investments, especially for those, um, families who have been historically conditioned? And then also, I'm thinking about this amazing partnership, how we might leverage, um, community opportunities such as something we just heard, and then creating, um, those early learning targets, to really think about expanding education beyond just programs, uh, thinking about those, that overall, um, space, as evidenced by what we just talked about. Um, so the way that we think about the work is that those are the areas that we're in, so we also want to make sure that we're thinking about really kind of grounded actions that further that, um, answering that question. So the first one around access, and this is the one that we're talking about and giving an update around today, um, we want to think about what it means, um, to make sure that we're an open and, and accessible space, but also gathering data around what those access barriers might mean, um, as well as, um, how we access, and we hope to do that, and we're going to talk about that in a bit, through our kindergarten registration process. Um, obviously, we're excited to do a hackathon soon, um, to make sure that we understand, um, in terms of, again, this, uh, long and fearful agreement, um, what is the data telling us about, um, investing for our families? And then, um, obviously, thinking about, um, that data and how that might manifest in terms of the opportunities provided to our families beyond programming that CDD based on what we learned from, um, that statement. So, um, thinking about, again, um, the kindergarten registration process, the team has been working diligently to think about what those questions are that we can add to an early childhood survey. So this survey exists in our kindergarten readiness, kindergarten registration process, and it's only for those students who, um, are getting ready for kindergarten. So we do have an opportunity every year to think about the registration process, what we want to add, perhaps take away. So you've done something up, um, but the team is also thinking about how to add two questions, one that's focused on assets, um, and another that's focused on exploring barriers. Um, so the assets question, which we're going to pilot, unless there's an optional question, um, is really asking families, because there are probably five big areas that we want to kind of probe in terms of what we think, um, are those assets? So family activities, so the creative play, community activities, so going to the park, going to the library, um, helping development, making sure that we're, you know, getting those pediatrician visits, dental care, um, care education classes, um, probing family and social networks, so are we having babies with their children? Are there online parent groups or family groups that are supporting us? And then obviously, formal early learning in terms of licensed family childcare, or at least center-based early care and educational programs, so that we're probing the degree to which we, parents actually engage, or families engage in these activities, and also the degree to which they find them valuable when thinking about kindergarten. Um, so again, this will be a pilot question. Um, the second question that, um, the team is really interested in is also this idea of the areas and challenges. So the question that represents itself in the survey is, um, what has made it difficult for you, your family, to find, um, an access high-quality early childhood program? Um, so again, five broad categories, so families who indicate perhaps, um, that it was costly basic access, which would, because we're too expensive, they didn't have the right way for me to actually use, um, transportation, I didn't accept the subsidy that I have, um, in terms of available on scheduling. So the waitlist for too long at the, the center program that I wanted, um, I couldn't find something with an open slot. I need a full day, and I was only getting half-day options, I need to have a weekend option, um, also program features, system programs require the programs perhaps required that my child be fully cognitive trained, and we're not there yet, um, language and cultural, that, so either there wasn't, um, instruction available in my home language, or we couldn't find providers that really reflected who we were culturally. And then perhaps information support, so we just didn't know, um, what was available, um, nor did we understand what self-provided requirements. So this will be, um, a question that we will actually, we're hoping to include, um, as required. So the team is still working with, obviously, our registration folks, just to make sure that all of the, wherever the dots and all that stuff lines up, to make sure that it is easy, um, for families, because we also don't want to add, um, additional minutes to the time and make the, the actual registration process a barrier. Um, so we're still working through this, but this, these are the two questions that we're really kind of have worked as a team to, um, ask, so that we can actually start planning for, um, as we kind of explore those barriers, and around those. And then this is a really good opportunity, because all of the students who come through District 97 actually represent it with this process, so we'll hopefully get some really good data, um, that can tell us beyond undoubtedly what's in a barrier, um, to, to, okay. And that is when we are, we're ready again in January, um, so, next month, next, twenty twenty-five. So, um, really excited about that.
Is this how the question would occur?
No, so I know, so, um, we were trying to get everything on a slide, um, sorry about that, it was a bit dense. Um, but, so the question, actually, for the barriers question, for example, they would, families would present it with, um, I didn't have barriers, I didn't need childcare, and that would be fine, we'd move on to the next question. But if they did have some difficulties, then the dropdowns would come down, and then, um, so cost of basic access might be a barrier, and then they'd be able to, for each of those probes, there's, uh, and there's several more beyond what's here, but say the program was too expensive, or transportation is difficult, they'd be able to use a checkbox, um, to check as many barriers as they, like, to, to. And then we'd be able to pull the data from the backend to kind of see, um, what the patterns and themes are that emerge.
I think it would be, uh, it would be great to have a, just one question, just simply asking about, uh, whether they consider themselves traditional or non-conditional hours to get a better feel for the, the community.
Yeah.
And I, I think our, our collective hunch is that we're not adequately serving the non-conditional hour members of our community with what we have. It'd be great to get more conclusive smoking content on that.
Absolutely.
So, um, in your packet, you got the big annual report that we do, um, and you may have noticed that there is some data that is not yet included in that report, and we just wanted to give an update on that, which is to let you know, um, and again, our IGA reps heard this at our last meeting, but that, um, we have had our research partnership with Chayton Hall at the University of Chicago since 2013. So they were our original research partner under this contract. Um, and our entire research team shifted over to Nork, also at the University of Chicago. It doesn't seem like it's a big move, but it does require, um, it required a new contract, it requires new data use agreements, data sharing agreements, and obviously, those can take a little bit of time to move through the process of legal reviews and back and forth, and ensuring that those meet all of the standards of all of the signatories to them. Um, so that temporarily paused data sharing, but it did not pause data collection. So we, um, are continuing to collect data, continuing to be ready, and then once those data use agreements are signed, we'll be able to update this year's report, so that you all can get seventy-four pages, I can't remember the exact number, but of, um, of really comprehensive data that looks at this last year, and we'll be able to continue providing that data moving forward. Um, so in the meantime, we did just want to share some highlights from the last year, um, in terms of what our community was able to do together. And I think, um, what you can see on the screen is really what outreach has looked like over the last just couple of years, and how we've distributed materials, again, as a community in partnership, um, to thousands of families. Um, we attended sixty outreach events this last year, so more than one a week, um, really just looking to connect with families where they are to make sure that they have information about what's available to them, to hear from them about their needs and concerns, um, and to get them connected with what would be most beneficial to them. Um, we continue providing home visiting here in Oak Park, which is a really exciting initiative, where a trained educator goes out to families' homes and provides support. Um, that begins as early as the prenatal period for families, and can continue until a child is five. Um, and in the last year, our, our home visitors, which we do in partnership with Easter Sales, conducted five hundred and thirty-five home visits to families across our community. Um, our screening program, we celebrated ten years of developmental screening this year, so we've conducted more than fifteen thousand screenings in those ten years, which is really remarkable. Um, screenings happen across locations in the community, including early care and education programs, community locations like Wonder Works, or the Oak Park Public Library, um, pediatricians' offices, that kind of thing, where we're helping parents and caregivers, um, sort of take a look at their children's development, see if they seem to be on track, or if those screenings flag concerns that need some further follow-up. Um, and the goal really being to catch concerns early, so that we can connect kids and families with the resources and supports that they need, um, early. And in addition to that, we're doing vision and hearing screenings. Um, as a person who's had glasses since kindergarten, I remember my first glasses, because it was quite revolutionary, how much I could see. Um, and so how much our vision is connected to our capacity to learn, and catching vision concerns early, so that we can either correct with glasses or support with the right resources is really, really important. Um, we also have a lovely story to share of a little one who got a, a hearing screening that he did not pass. Um, and so he was referred for some further follow-up, and as it turned out, he had, um, not a hearing issue, but what's called an auditory processing disorder, which is where your brain sort of takes in information differently, and has a hard time communicating to the rest of your body what to do with that information. What it can look like in children is defiance, or bad behavior, or not listening, or being disrespectful, when in fact, it's just that the brain is processing that information differently. And so that hearing screening caught a concern and got that child connected with the right resources, so that in the classroom, it's seen as, oh, he didn't respond to that, let me try again with a visual cue, let me do something different, um, so that we can, uh, individualize what that child needs, instead of assuming that there is something wrong, right? Um, professional development, we continue, um, to plan in partnership with a great committee that includes educators and home childcare providers, and a whole bunch of different folks. Um, and our annual symposium is coming up again in February, which is not next month, but the month after, can you tell? I can't believe it's December, I'm really struggling. Um, so our symposium this last year, we had three hun, more than three hundred attendees, um, and really just with the goal of providing access to high-quality professional development for our early learning providers. Um, and then we're just super excited to partner with D97, and a lot of community partners in the Port District and the Village to host our second annual Blast Off to Kindergarten. Um, about two hundred families celebrated with us in Rain Park, um, where families have an opportunity to connect with one another, connect with, um, the schools, so the PTOs and representatives from all of the local elementary schools were there, which was really wonderful. And we heard from so many parents how comforting and exciting that was for them, to have that opportunity to meet people, um, and just really celebrate this big transition. So that's really a community lift, um, that helps us do that work as well. Um, and so those are just some highlights that we wanted to share from this year, but would love if there are questions or comments, or anything that anyone wants to raise.
So, did we, have we decided, we had several discussions about this, um, today, um, if we're going to table D until the final? We can get into it maybe now, and at least, uh, you know, I've got the memo of the materials. Um, the, um, discussion item D, collaboration for early childhood committee governance, this is on, you know, we've had a number of side conversations, uh, here and there, um, about governance and about, um, a shared observation that the, the nature of this committee has changed over the years, and that, and that maybe we really need to take a good hard look at governance and look at how we operationalize, um, our respective, uh, agency's commitment to, um, to this committee, to early childhood education, and look at how we can better, um, get more meaningful substantive work done, uh, around early childhood in our community. So that's why this is on here. Um, you know, we, uh, I think the, um, the genesis of this committee was one that, uh, more getting everyone together and making sure, I mean, almost just like symbolic, and keeping people informed and, and engaged, and, and I think we, we can agree, we all moved on to a different, um, a different stage, or a different phase, where we are invested actors, looking to, um, to better, uh, leverage our time together in a meaningful way, getting it done. So it, it seems really timely that, um, the basics presentations today, it's, it's exciting to look at, um, what evidence-based shared frameworks are out there that could potentially anchor, um, a spot in our efforts. So, um, that's what, what this item is and why this is on here. Uh, I think that we could spend a lot of time talking about it. We could certainly start to get into it tonight if we'd like to. Um, I'm not sure, but, uh, what, what do you think about that? Or if it's better to focus that the next meeting, uh, the lines share on this item?
As, as the rep for D97 this evening, and, and individual, uh, I am sure the village is in the same kind of boat. I think this is a conversation that needs to be had when we actually have floor forums here, because I do think it's important, but I also think we need.
Same, yeah, century, so, 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 we have people who are wanting to contribute, but maybe they have everyone able to. But I just wanted to give context as to what this is all about. Are there comments? Okay, um, then we'll move on to, uh, information items. There's just one, the, uh, the annual report.
Oh, sure.
Also, in your packets was, um, another annual report we do, but a much shorter one. So if you need just some condensed, um, highlights of the work that we do, or if it's ever helpful to have that as a resource to, um, share what the collaboration is and what we're about, that our, um, our annual impact report was also in your packets for your.
Are there questions or comments? Um, I will then move to adjourn, um, at, um, seven forty-seven PM.
Can I just say, Mary, I know how hard you, you team work to pull these meetings together. You deserve a lot of our attention and collaboration. Definitely appreciate you. As a grandmother of two, I'll be having coffee with Tom.
And taking notes, okay? Yeah.
Thank you.